We are all here. Then I would like to call to order the special meeting for general purposes on Monday, August 28th, 2023. Please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Or.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Present.
Mrs. Cleary?
Present.
Ms. Cruz?
Present.
Ms. Fox?
Present.
Ms. Gilmartin?
Present.
Mr. Holmes?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mrs. Yanni?
Present.
Ms. Hume?
Present.
Nine present.
This meeting has been called for general purposes and has been duly advertised. At this time, we'll have public comment. Our first speaker is Suzanne Gallo from, if you'd like to come.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Suzanne Gallo. I am first grade teacher at Neil Armstrong Elementary and a member of the SFT. First of all, I am extremely grateful for all of the renovations that have taken place in our school, but unfortunately, that is the reason that I am here. We are, we have one day left before we begin a two-day series of in-services, and we still have no access to our building. So, a little bit of history, we spent most of last year, we had to pack our, all of our belongings, our rooms had to be completely emptied, we had to pack the boxes ourselves, we had to label them, we had to get them ready, all while we were teaching. We had to leave the building on the last day of school, June 16th, and we have not been allowed back into our building. We didn't, we do not have our laptops, so today is Monday, we have tomorrow, and then Wednesday meetings and Thursday meetings. Friday, the building is not open, and Monday's a holiday, and Tuesday, we will have 400-plus kids returning to our building. And at this point, our ability to begin our school year prepared and ready is severely compromised. My, all of our, my things along, as long, as well as my colleagues, are all packed in boxes. It's like if you're a carpenter, a construction worker, and all your tools, you have to build a house with no tools. It, it's very disheartening, and this is, it takes a very long time to arrange a classroom, and it, it just doesn't happen with the snap of a finger. And we were assured that we would be in, in enough time to be able to prepare, and today's Monday. I, I, I don't know what the answer is. Empathetically, trying to put yourselves in our shoes, we're, we're, we want to be ready, and we'll make it work somehow, but to go, to know right now that all of our things are sitting in boxes, our furniture is not arranged, our copies aren't made, we, we have no access to anything, to know that before you know it, it will be next Tuesday. I, I just don't understand why this had to be done in this fashion, and we, we want to be there for our students in the best way possible, but I, I was hoping this would be different, and we, even though we were assured, we all had a feeling that we were going to be here, and I don't know if you were aware of this, but we, we are closed, our building is closed, and if you, if there's anything that can be done to help us or to prevent this from ever happening again, I, I hope that would be on your to-do list, because this is, this is a very difficult position for us to be in, a whole building with 400-plus kids. So, in case you weren't aware of that, that is our situation, and I do thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jessica Green.
I'm here for a different reason, and I might not be able to say this now, but I-
I'm sorry, I can't, would you mind just moving a little closer to the microphone?
Can you hear me?
Thank you so much, that's better, thank you so much.
I'm here for a different reason, and you may stop me if you would like, but I need you guys to see what happened to my daughter at a football game that could have been prevented two years ago, when you guys had students in your school, who've been taunting and torturing and bullying all these children, and nothing was done. My daughter wasn't just attacked once, guys, she was attacked twice by almost 15 kids, right in front of everybody, and it was recorded, and my son had to use his body as a shield to protect her. Somebody explain to me how this happened with the same children who've been in trouble with this school for two years, and now my daughter is suffering, and I don't know what to do to fix it. Somebody help me explain this. That's all, I need you to see what happened, and how I'm not gonna stop until something is done, just know this, I'm not okay, she is not okay, and the fact that that same kid was able to come to my son's game the next day and taunt me, and nobody do anything, I don't understand, and I'm sorry that I have to come here to say it, but I need help, and I need you guys to help me, because our kids are not safe, guys, help. That's all I wanna say, and I just need you to see, and this is with makeup on, and I know you can see her face glowing from a mile away, and there's videos, and I would like for you guys to see them, but I'm waiting for my attorney to attend to make that happen. I just wanted to say that, thank you for listening.
Mrs. Green, I'm truly sorry for what happened to your daughter, no child should go through that. Has anybody from the district reached out to talk to you?
Probably a couple, like, two hours before I got here, yes.
Okay, so you have spoken with somebody?
Yes.
Mr. Laffey, can we continue to follow up on this?
Absolutely, yes, we will have, again, we will continue to communicate with Ms. Green and follow up with her.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Green, the police were also involved, correct?
Oh, yeah, I, a little girl in the bathroom wound up calling the cops because they had the bathroom at the school locked down for 45 minutes. They actually attacked multiple kids that night and recorded it, I have every video. They wound up literally in a circle, right in front of the field, they attacked her. Again, my son plays for Junior Invaders, he wound up jumping over her using his body as a shield, but because he did that, she went to go to the bathroom to wipe the blood off her face, and a boy, a boy, is in the girl bathroom, telling her she needs to square up again, and that she could not exit that bathroom until she did, and she's crying at this point, saying, "I'm already beat up, I can't take anymore," so this boy shoves another girl, and they beat her up again, all of them jump her in the bathroom, and then they bring four other girls in the bathroom, and they beat them up for 45 minutes, they had that bathroom door locked. How did not nobody see that, notice that, or say anything? You have two police officers at the game, and yet a little girl's in the bathroom stall calling 911. That is how the fucking stopped, sorry, that's how this, how it ended. Somebody had to call 911, and they had to come. That is sad, guys, tell me, this is, it, it's sick what they did, and then they recorded it, and they admitted, like, the boy had the bathroom locked down for 45 minutes, ha, and the videos are being blasted everywhere, all over the internet, it's just, to them, it's a game, and they think it's cute, and it's okay. That's exactly what they said, they're untouchable.
Mr. Laffey, can we also look at the security setting, setup we have at the games going forward?
Certainly, and I, what I would say is, this is, this matter is being investigated by both the Scranton Police Department and our internal administration. In light of these events, we've actually asked our SSOs to beef up, add, I think, two more SSOs for each event.
Do we need to be at the bathroom?
That's what I was gonna say, can we station them over?
They will be, one, these additional staff will be assigned to each side of the bleachers, you know, monitoring the bathroom activity.
Do we have the name of the boys?
I do.
That were involved, has that been reported to the school administration?
Yes, it has, he's actually threatening me still to this moment.
I believe so, Ms. Holmes.
Okay.
I have the videos also, just so you all are aware.
Did you also, have you shared that with the central administration?
Yes, I have every video of every girl, they jumped at the game Friday. I also have 32 parents, just so you know, they all wrote a letter about these same children who taunted their kids at the school district, they were cited, that was good enough for the school, and now they're still going around, and I have 32 parents, to be exact.
Again, I do apologize, we have to do better with security over at the, at the games, but we'll also make sure that this is investigated and looked into on our end as well.
Again, thank you for listening.
Rosemary, you're up.
Well, that was disturbing, but I'm not, I'm not shocked, I should be shocked, I wish I were, I'm not, because I know, teacher after teacher after teacher has come before this board and said what's going on inside our schools, let alone at the ballgames. My understanding of the rules is that this would lead to an expulsion out of this district, and I don't know when that expulsion is going to be scheduled, but it should be scheduled immediately, because if kids think that they could do that, act like marauders, going after kids, beating them up, not even a one-on-one fight, then something has to be done, and we have been demanding discipline, we need rules of discipline, we're working on them constantly, and certain kids just want to disregard all of the above, and they have to be identified, and they have to be expelled from this Scranton School District, and there should be no quarter given to them, get them out of here. That's enough. They're using filthy language to teachers, telling teachers every other day of the week what they can do, filthy language in our schools, in their classrooms, they're raiding the halls, flaunting it, and you get one settled down, and you have two more in its place, and you know what the result is? Check how many children have left our district, I filed a right to know, it's appalling, the number of five, six, seven, eighth grade children who have left this district. We've got to correct these mistakes, and we better not sit around waiting for some manna from heaven to happen, we've got to correct the mistakes, so that we don't continue the bleed. What is this district if we're bleeding children every day of the week? The parochial schools are packed, you can't even get in, and we're gonna continue? When does this insanity stop? We know the mistakes, we've heard them, I've heard them in this room a million times, that might be slight hyperbole, maybe 100,000 times. You have to, nobody's making it up, please, as adults, let's be the adults, they're the children, we're the adults, let's get this taken care of fast, enough, if they think they can get away with it, let's show them that they do not get away with it. We're the adults. You just heard a teacher tell you about the schools, well, we all know that. The reason I'm even bringing it up is because I need you to put your thinking caps on and remember what's told to you the last school board meeting. Everything's on time, our schedule is in time, we're all on time, everything's gonna be hunky-dory by the 26th of August. Oh, yeah? Well, don't close the schools down, because it's their fault, they know what they got done and what they didn't get done, and I was at a meeting of our executive board, our reps, today. I would recommend every school board member get into the schools and see what the teachers are saying, it's important, it's important. You were lied to, I don't mean anybody misspoke, I mean they lied, and I sat here and listened to it. And on another point of clarification, I need a lot of clarification on this permit issue that was about $250,000, I have checked with contractors, I've asked the procedure in the Scranton area, I know what happens at my house when I do something, my contractor goes down and gets a permit, it's put in my front window, he pays the permit, and then I pay it on my bill. So, you know what, somebody's fooling around here, and I don't know how, as one governing tax body that we are, and the city is another governing tax body, why didn't the city of Scranton, a taxing body, give you all a break and say, "Guess what, school board, we're not gonna charge you permit fees, we're gonna waive them and save taxpayers a mighty dollar." Why didn't that conversation take place? A taxing body in Scranton is taxing another taxing body. The people got taxed, why? That's insane. Now, somebody is monkeying around, and if you think all the people in this city are gonna sit around and pretend that they didn't hear what was said, you're mistaken, and the contractors I spoke with said to me, every contractor that works for the, in the city of Scranton does the same process, except the ones who work for us. I would recommend strongly finding out what's going on and fixing it quickly.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you.
All right. That's the end of public comment for this evening. At this special meeting, we now move on to our action items.
All right, so we have a motion, 5.1, the motion to release Ms. Rose McTiernan as superintendent as per attached, whereas, Ms. Rose McTiernan has submitted her resignation in a timely fashion, as required by her employment contract, and whereas, Ms. Rose McTiernan has given her notice as of July 24th, 2023, and whereas, the Board of Directors had determined that this is the best interest of the school district to release her from her services as of August 31st, 2023, and now therefore, it is resolved upon her voluntary resignation, and that Ms. Rose McTiernan is released from her services as allowed by her employment contract, and that she is effectively terminated as superintendent of school districts, of the Scranton School District as of August 31st, 2023, and that she shall receive such payment and entitlements as prescribed in her contract of employment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I'm voting no to this, the superintendent's contract does state that she needs to give 30 days' notice, or excuse me, 90 days, it has not been that time yet. We are going into the first week of school without a superintendent, Phoenixville will have a superintendent, but with everything going on in this district, we're not gonna have the superintendent that's been here for that first day, so I'm voting no to this motion.
Thank you, Director Cheswick. I unfortunately was absent at our last special meeting, I was in, literally in an airplane in midair and couldn't phone in. I would like to say that this, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Superintendent McTiernan for all that she did for this district. Those of us who were elected in 2019 were sitting in this audience when the unexpected resignation of Dr. Kirian, literally three weeks before school began, I think two weeks, left us with no superintendent and a pretty messy situation, and Superintendent McTiernan stepped up and worked and worked and worked, and during her tenure in this district, was a leading force for change for good, she coped with asbestos, she coped with COVID, she coped with us, and to be honest, I think we were very blessed to have her services, and I think she did a great job. I think that Phoenixville's gain, I agree with you, Phoenixville's gain is Scranton's loss, but I just want to thank our superintendent for everything she contributed to us during the period that she worked so hard and so long and so well, and I wish her well. Anything further on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Or.
Mrs. Cheswick?
No.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmartin?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Eight affirmative, one negative, motion passes.
All right, next up is 5.2, motion to appoint Mr. Patrick Laffey as acting superintendent per the attached, whereas, effective September 1st, 2023, a vacancy will exist in the office of the Superintendent of Scranton School District, and whereas, the Board of Directors has already begun a diligent search for a new superintendent, and whereas, the Board of Directors finds it impossible and impractical to immediately fill the vacancy of the office of superintendent, and whereas, the Board of Directors is authorized to appoint an acting district superintendent to serve until permanent superintendent is hired for no longer than one year, and whereas, the Board of Directors has determined that Patrick Laffey, who currently serves as the business manager for the school district, is the most knowledgeable and able to fill this role of the superintendent, and that Patrick Laffey is hereby appointed as superintendent for the term beginning September 1st, 2023, lasting until permanent superintendent is hired or one year, whichever shall, whichever shall first occur, and that, for services of, as acting superintendent, Patrick Laffey shall receive an additional compensation above his regular salary in the amount of $125 per diem for each day served as acting superintendent, and that Patrick Laffey shall immediately be reinstated as business manager upon the termination of his position as acting superintendent.
Second.
On the question?
On the question?
Oh, go first.
Go ahead.
No, no, you go first.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Laffey, what you do as business manager, you are phenomenal, we are so lucky to have you in this district, so with me voting no to this tonight does not have anything to do with you and your role personally, but I am concerned with going forward, taking our business manager and taking him away from what he's so good at, and moving in, moving him into this role, especially when we don't have a CRO, when we don't have a superintendent, when we're a district in recovery, and, you know, the focus is budget time right now, so I will be voting no to that tonight.
Director Cruz?
On the question, I will be proudly voting yes on this motion. Mr. Laffey has served the Scranton School District with distinction for over a decade, and was instrumental in us progressing through the recovery process and us achieving financial solvency. He has demonstrated a standard of integrity and ethical fortitude that this district demands, and I am confident that he will bring, and indeed is already bringing, that same low of excellence to this role, and I am grateful for him to, for taking this on. Thank you.
Director Cheswick, are you not aware that we do now have a CRO assigned to us?
I thought that was an interim.
But, but we do have one, are you aware of that? I just wanted to be sure.
Yes, but I'm just saying, like, there's a lot going on right now, and there's no one in, like, in the superintendent role, we, like, we lost our superintendent, we lost our CRO, so the way I see it, Mr. Laffey is that one stable person, holding the district together financially right now, everyone is so concerned about cost here and there, and we're moving, removing him from that, that's my concern.
And, and as such, I can think of no one better to lead us at this time. Is there anything further on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Or.
Mrs. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmartin?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
No.
Mrs. Hume?
Yes.
Eight affirmative, one negative, motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laffey, for stepping up and taking the side.
And thank you for the opportunity, I look forward to, you know, continuing to work with the school board, or my central administrative team, the professional and paraprofessional staff of the district, and obviously our custodial and support services staff to, you know, kick off this exciting new school year, so we look forward to, thank you.
It's exciting, yes, thank you.
I wanna say thank you, too.
I'd now like to ask Attorney Freund to please administer the oath of whatever.
Of acting office.
Of acting office, but, thank you.
Mr. Laffey, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick Laffey.
I, Patrick Laffey.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly affirm that I will prepare, defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
Thank you. And without objection?
President Hume, prior to adjourning, could we address the comments made regarding permit fees? Because I, I'd just like to make one point that I, I did at two separate meetings, ask for us to reach out to the city to have those fees either waived or discounted. So that, that was discussed at two meetings. But I'm, I'm wondering if we could just either have Ethan or Mr. Rutger address how we pay those permit fees.
Okay. Okay, could, could we do that perhaps during the work session when we are discussing?
Sure, I, I'd just like to cover that this evening.
Absolutely.
All right, great, thank you.
And Mr. Laffey, in your new role, is there any matters arising from public comment that you would like to address at this time?
Again, just, you know, just to echo what we were talking about with security. Again, we, obviously, the safety of our students is most important. And again, we will take action on this and, you know, beef up the security at Memorial Stadium. I will note that it, we did have our standard security detail there at that evening. But I'm happy to report that, again, that it's been under investigation by both police department and our internal team. And I believe they've been able to identify all students involved.
Okay, so we shall hear this. I, I believe it's very sad that one of the great features of American high school life, which is something that was new to me when I came to Scranton, which I now appreciate the importance of, is disrupted so much. It should be a time of joy and celebration and fi, you know, not fighting, but it should be a struggle for the two teams. That's where the conflict takes place. The contest is on the field, not in the stands. And I'm distressed by what happened, but confident that we will be able to prevent it happening again and get to the bottom of what actually happened.
And I appreciate you saying, and I'm sure it's on behalf of the whole board, that it is very distressing to hear those comments. So we, we are all very, very understanding and very concerned. And we'll do all that we can to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
And, yeah, okay. So without, so we are adjourned without objection?
Yes.
Okay. So we shall now move on to the work session for August 28th, 2023. The, Director Gil Martin?
Yes, thank you. Under budget and finance, we will have motions to approve bill list and exception bill list, delinquent tax report, treasurer's report, repository sales, budget transfers, disposal of assets, and real estate assessment approvals. Those last four items, if any, are necessary at our meeting. And in, in the event that there are real estate assessment approvals, I would ask that that comes off the consent agenda.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And now we have a discussion and a motion on investment of bond proceeds and fund balance.
Uh, yes.
Switching back.
Yes. So we've been looking at some options for, again, I brought this forward to you, I believe, in June. But we've been exploring some options in terms of the investment of our bond proceeds and also the surplus cash on hand that we've been able to obtain for, by building up our fund balance to right around 8%. At this moment, we, we do have some proposals from different financial institutions with, with rates. Some of them also offer some services that would come with it related to reporting that's necessary for, for bond proceeds. So by the end of this, excuse me, by early next week, we will have a recommendation to the board for consideration at the September 11 meeting.
Thank you. And do we have a contract? Any contracts update?
We do, just approximately five of them. So again, per policy, six, 10, any, the, the business office has the authority to enter into contracts that are budgeted for, not subject to bidder quotation, and, you know, are in compliance with our budget policy. We did approve an additional two AED machines for our staff with Cintas. The district had previously entered into a contract with Cintas for numerous other AED machines. We were, we found out there was two additional units that needed to be refurbished or returned in, and we procured two additional. We approved a contract with NEI-19 for $1,200 for a mindfulness training that will be funded with Title I dollars. The next three are also budgeted in various departments. We approved the Davis Demographic contract for $1,295 for our registration boundary site location service. We approved a service called Linkit, which is tracking our mandated Act 158 graduation requirements. And we approved a contract for Smart Futures, which is a renewal of a current contract. We've been utilizing this service for a few years now. It's a data portfolio collection of artifacts for students K through 12 to meet their college and career readiness standards. That one did have a cost of $19,500.
Can I do on the question? I just have a question about one of the, the Act 158. I thought we already had, unless I'm misunderstanding, I thought we already had a program that handled the 158. Or is this the program that we have? That's the program that we have? Okay, I thought maybe we were, like, doing two of, you know? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, thank you very much indeed. Ty, community relations.
Yes, we have a motion to approve donations, and a motion to approve the John F. Kennedy Playground Memorandum of Understanding. And we'll now have a discussion on the community, communications with the community.
Just, just before we move on to the communicate, the discussion, I just briefly wanted to have a little discussion about the memorandum of understanding about the playground at John F. Kennedy. Because today, there was a meeting between the city, the Scranton Chamber, Scranton Area Community.
Scranton Area Community Foundation.
Thank you, thank you. Valley in Motion and the Trust for Public Land. And we have, as people know, very much had the, the schoolyard project at John F. Kennedy, which is going ahead great guns. We're just in the point of that. But I would like to ask Mr. Gus Fay from Valley in Motion, just very briefly, indulge your president, please, because he has some very good news for us. And also to discuss the whole project.
Sure. Hi, everybody. As many of you know, we have this community schoolyards project that, that we're bringing to this Scranton School District. We're working with this national nonprofit, Trust for Public Land, that works on improving access to parks around the nation. They've got 300 of these terrific schoolyards that they built around the country. And they've come to Scranton wanting to do good work here. So for the last year or so, we've been working with them to identify sites within Scranton where we can build exceptional playgrounds, where there's right now just asphalt that the kids play on and to, to turn them into these exceptional playgrounds. So what Trust for Public Land has, has asked is that there be a memorandum of understanding between the school district and them that helps them, that they can then take to, to larger funders out there that can really, that can fund these playgrounds. So the whole idea is that this national nonprofit raises the money for these terrific playgrounds and that the school district then is responsible for long-term maintenance and then having them publicly accessible within reason. So after-school hours and then, you know, within reason that the school district determines. So I think this is a, this, well, I think it's a terrific opportunity for instant, for, to begin with. But Trust for Public Land needs this MOU as part of their negotiations with the Weinberg Foundation. And the Weinberg Foundation, which would make a very big investment into these schoolyards, they need something in, in black and white. So that's what they're looking for. Do you want more than that, Director Hume?
Well, the only thing today on this meeting was there was a very exciting possibility for next year.
Sure, yeah. So this year, we worked with Kennedy Elementary to do this participatory design with students where they actually sat down and they talked to administrators, students, and community members about what kind of design that they've done. And so we're taking that design that the kids came up with. And a landscape architect is going to take that and turn that into design drawings. And this year, we're going to be working with Whittier Elementary. So many of you know that they've got sort of a playground emergency situation where they really can't use their playground. We're going to start this participatory design process with the kids at Whittier Elementary. And, and we hope then in the future to do other schools as well. We've got Francis Willard is sort of the next one on our, in our sights.
I think that's fantastic news, Mr. Fay. And I have to say, having Director Holmes and I sat almost two years ago and started talking about this project. And it is so exciting to see that, that playground at Kennedy is going to serve not only the elementary students that are there now and the general community, but it's going to be there for decades. And it's going to be an oasis of greenery and community places that we can love. And I think that's very exciting that that same benefit will come to Whittier. I know on the school board, there's lots of things we want to do and we can't do it because we can't afford them. And recreational playgrounds and things have been beyond our grasp while we've been in financial distress. To have this project going, I want to thank you. I want to thank Trust for Public Lands. I want to thank the Scranton Area Community Foundation, the Weinberg Foundation, everybody involved. This is a win for our district, and thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you for indulging me, Ty.
Absolutely. I guess the discussion that we were going to have is just, I guess, my expectations and understanding. We have so many great things going on in this district, and we need to hear more about them. We have enough negative stuff that's, that's posted or whatever. We hired a PR person so that we could positively put things in spotlight, like our students, teachers. I would like to see that we take our PR person and really focus this year because we've had, since June, two, two principals who have become doctors. We had 12 girls from West Scranton High School selected for the All-American Cheerleading Team. Take one here. We had West Scranton Football Team on numerous occasions volunteer at CHOP, Child Hunger Outreach Partner, to come over and pack bags for kids going out. But it wasn't that they just came over. It's the manner in which they did it. They came over and they were phenomenal representations of the community, the school, and their generation. Their coach isn't just a coach, football coach. If you've never been around that coach, he's teaching them, young men, how to be professionals. I was taken back, the entire staff of CHOP raved about the West Scranton Football Team and how they conducted themselves. I just want to see more, and I mean a lot more. I want to see profiles of students this year, teachers. We, again, we have so many phenomenal, wonderful people here. We need to be our own PR machine. We hired a person for that. I really want to see that happening. I think that's, you know, the whole point and purpose of hiring that person. But also, I think our people want to see their, their fellow classmates, teachers, being saluted and patted on the back, as we should.
I think, I think you make a fascinating point and an excellent point. And the only thing I can say is, to do this, we, we have to have knowledge of what's going on before it happens so that we can make sure that we can generate the, the coverage, we can generate the reportage on it, and we can do all of this. I am very impressed. I think we lucked in with our communications director. She's tireless and she writes well and she's upbeat and she's wonderful. But she cannot tell the world about good things going on unless she knows what's going on. And I think it's incumbent on the district itself, the administration, the buildings, the staff, everybody, to get in the habit of including Sydney Toy, our very wonderful communications officer, in what's going on. So that when there's something coming up that is exciting, just automatically you flag it. Maybe it's not going to work, but she cannot help us unless we do it. And this is a new mindset for us. We've not had a communications officer for a long time. So it's just a habit that people can get into. And I encourage the principals, the administration, all of the different directors, and indeed the teachers.
Can we create a Google form so there's one place where people can see that?
I was, I was. Thank, thank you. You, you read my mind. Because I, I think the, the board level conversation of this is tasking the administration to work with Sydney and, and any appropriate parties to set a system for this, a reporting system. And also a, a plan of, of work. What, you know, what are the focus areas? Are they student profiles or are they? I don't, I, I mean, I think suggestions are, of course, welcome. But I don't think that's up to the board to dictate. I think we have to understand what's realistic.
Just to drop back to the board, too, is the PSBA, like, the, the highlights of the good things happening, which is something we do with Sydney, too.
Yep.
So if we, if that discussion occurs, we can hopefully end up with a place for all of it.
Yeah, like this, obviously, as we noted, this program is brand new and it is growing. And as, as, as we grow, I think Director Holmes, those are phenomenal ideas. And it goes back to opening those lines of communications up to Ms. Toy from the schools, getting, making sure that she is aware of it. So the administration will come together with a plan on how to make, make that happen.
That would be great. Because I, I think that even in the short time she's been with us, it's been great. But we can, will help give her material to help make it even better.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. We've got some great kids, great staff members, great people doing a lot of great things. We just need to get that out there, so.
And, and I will say that from the moment that Ms. Toy has taken on her role, the, the level of post having to do with the goings on in the district have increased. I, I was there when Trust for Public Land came, was at Kennedy Elementary. She was there with, with her camera. I was at McNichols Plaza today at their Back to School Fair. She was there as well. And I, I follow the district social media on a daily basis and see the kind of posts that she puts up. So she is doing an excellent job.
And actually, I've just been told that at today's principals' meeting, Ms. Toy was already speaking about a forum such as this at, with our staff. So it's in, it's in motion.
That's great.
Why we have Sarah Officer Hall here. Is there a contact, like for school notes or anything like that, that we can make sure? We can get stuff, the positive stuff in the paper too for our kids? Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, anything?
Thank you, Director Holmes, for bringing that up. And, and thank you, Sydney, for, we look forward to, to you bringing us your, your plan with administration.
Can I make one more quick suggestion? Just out of a conversation with several people, I don't know if it would make it easy. I understand Google forms and you could simplify this. How about every principal appoint one person as that point of contact to talk to Sydney? Instead of creating more forums for people to write, one person per school sends an email. Centralize it, simplify it. There you go.
Great. Great idea.
Okay. So I think, thank you very much, Ty. Moving on to Director Chesick.
Okay, under education, we will have a motion to approve the permission to attend meetings and conferences. Motion to approve the 2023-2024 student handbooks, SSD district policies, elementary, intermediate, second, secondary, and sign-offs, Scranton Cyber Academy and STEM Academy. Motion to approve high school esports club, discussion on the COOTH pilot program.
Yeah, so I, I was, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. Mrs. Hempel, can you kind of just give us a breakdown, or Mr. General Eze, or? Because I do have some concerns regarding the program. So I just want to go over the program first, remind everybody what it's about, and then I do have a few questions.
Good evening, everyone. COOTH Mental Health Services was introduced to us last fall as far as a, a pilot program, which is federally funded. It didn't cost us anything, that provided online 24/7, 365-day mental health services to our students. So by the time it was introduced by the gentleman of Brian Thomas, the COOTH team met with our counselors. Our counselors were very interested in adopting the program as a pilot program. Once it, it's only for grades six through 12. And if you're 14 or over, you don't need parent consent. If you're younger than 14, you need parent consent. It's a basically, if you're familiar with the Safe to Save Program, where it's an online program where students could report anything as far as 24/7. This is very similar as far as mental health services are provided. So we did take advantage of it. Our students, it first was built into the high school program for, for students. It was introduced. We want to blend it into our intermediate schools. We are going to have COOTH days to try to promote it and eventually share it with our, our students. But our high school students have been very successful with it. They've taken advantage of it. And once a student makes a contact, which they could do through her phone, smartphone, tablet, whatever, they'll make, they'll make a concern that they have as far as, you know, any mental health situation that they may have going on. And then the counselors, our home counselors will then be, then they will be contacted to the COOTH representatives on a professional counselor will be contacting our counselors to inform them what the situation is.
So I guess my first question is, the COOTH employees, are they all licensed mental health experts? Are they all licensed therapists? Because I did some research myself and I want to make sure that, you know, the people our students are talking to are actually experts.
Yes.
We're sure about that?
Yes.
Okay. My next question would be, did we try to navigate this, this website or this app? My understanding is anybody could log in because I know it's anonymous. And I know there's forums that, you know, peer-to-peer conversations. But my understanding is that any, you could log in, I could log in, anybody on this board could log in and say we're a student. And that's a big concern to me of who are we, who's communicating together on this forum if they're not actually students? I think that opens up, you know, a kind of a dangerous, scary thing for me. Has that, has that been looked into or can it be looked into?
Sure. Yes, we, we do meet with COOTH at least once a month. We will let them know on those concerns as far as, you know, who's coming in, who's making referrals.
I think that the question would be, could you provide the board with a little bit more information about how this, this program is monitored for safety for our students, to protect our students?
Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that, who were, like the professionals that we're talking to actually have a license in the field? Because I want more mental health stuff than anybody, but I want to make sure it's the right mental health help. And I also want to make sure that who they're talking to in the forums and the peer-to-peer are actually students and not a 45-year-old guy or something crazy. So that's where I want to make sure who's logging in. Is there a way to identify, like when you're logging in, like you have to put something to make sure you're actually a student?
Okay. We will do that.
Awesome.
Mr. General Eze, you did mention that it's 14 and over, they don't need parent consent, correct?
No.
Is that a district rule or is that like a COOTH rule?
COOTH rule.
That's a state law. That's a state law. Kids that are 14 and older can get services.
Okay. I didn't know that. I'm just, you know, I guess with what I'm hearing about it and if there's some sort of conversations going on with other individuals, like, and something very sensitive or urgent is, is stated to somebody that parents are not aware of it, so.
I think that's a law, isn't it? I think, I think.
It comes from the Mental Health Act, actually. Age 14, that's where it comes from.
I just want to make sure before we go any further with this, this is, we make sure this is the path we want to go.
Okay.
I, you know, I'll be waiting to hear the, the answers. I mean, that's all I have. Is anybody else?
Anything further on this? Thank you, Mr. General Eze.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Danielle?
I'm sorry, where are we here? We will have a discussion about the Scranton Area Community Foundation Pathway Navigator.
Um. The Scranton Area Community Foundation made a contact with us to present their Pathway Navigator program. The Pathway Navigator program works closely with guidance counselors and career services to find the most likely pathway to economic mobility for students, which indicate mentoring and most align opportunities for individual, including post-secondary and learning programs. Certificates and degrees, high-quality entry jobs, Pathway Navigator will also connect students with social support, unemployment services, and transportation, housing, and childcare. This is a program that's also, mental health has, there's been so many resources now available for us to take advantage of for mental health. And this is another opportunity that it fits under the umbrella of mental health services, but it's also a community resources. And it gives students an opportunity to talk about economic growth development, workforce development. And the Scranton Foundation wants to come in one day a week in each high school to help our guidance staff, help our students with these programs and our counselors.
I got no questions. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Mr. General Eze.
What age group would this be, Mr. General Eze?
What's that?
Which age group would this be?
They're going to go into the high schools.
They're going into the high schools?
Yeah, one day a week.
Starting as freshmen or?
One, one day a week, they're going to go to each high school. And they're going to help out the guidance staff with these resources and opportunities to connect with our students.
Okay. Well, I think we should be very grateful for their help.
There's a lot of opportunities. Again, we're trying to take advantage of as many mental health resources that we can, we can to provide to our students.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, you've done a lot of work on, on all of that for our social and emotional learning and I appreciate that. I know you've worked closely with our counselors in our schools and, and you're right, it is very important.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and next we will have a discussion about the progress on the website.
I'll start off by saying, Mr. Rucker and his team have been working very hard to get this up and running. We've even engaged our IT consultants to, to assist with this. The, obviously the main page is, is set up and accessible to the public. We are adding school contact information there as well for the parents. And, you know, the, the individual school sites, I know Mr. Rucker's been, we'll talk about it in a moment. But again, working very diligently, again, even bringing in the LSIC consultation as I noted. And we hope to turn it over to the principals ASAP. But Rob, if you'd like, if you want more detail, please.
Pat just pretty much said the whole thing. We have been working. It's going to be functionally the exact same as the district page. Each one of the building principals will be issued out their login information to start updating their news and events. It's just going to be post-page pops and news and events for them. It's primarily it. Everything else is functionally going to be the same.
Is the information on there now? I mean, I know it was spoken of earlier that there are still students trying to register. So I know that the website's back up. So do we have that at a minimum on there that if a parent is looking to register their?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that will be up tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Rob, but I'm trying to look on this, on the front page and I can't, can't see where the button for the survey is. I thought we were going to put a hot button on the front page about the links to the survey for the superintendent's search.
I'll double check that. That should have been posted, I think. I thought Ms. Toy was handling that.
If I'm looking at this correctly, it, it appears there to be something under the featured news tab.
Ah, that's the, there's a statement. It's a featured news, okay. Maybe we could make that.
Oh, down far.
Maybe we could put that as a separate button rather than that because I would not know.
Do you want it to be something that comes up on the screen whenever you first? Okay, I'll make that happen.
A pop button, please.
Yeah, pop up because it's way down. You have to scroll.
No, it says it's got Sydney's statement, but you don't, you know, it's, it's, doesn't say, "Fill in this survey." It just, you have to read it and know where to look for it. So if you could help me a little bit and put that button on the front page?
I'll have that done tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Can I just add something regarding the website? Since it was like down for about like two or three days, was it? Are we able to maybe extend the survey deadline just to make up for the time that it was down and individuals couldn't access the website? Because not, not everyone has social media.
I'm sure we can do that. I know that Sean's going to give us an update on the search. And I know that today the extended, so I'm sure we can extend it to the 12th.
I would say we should reach out to Mr. Templeton and see what he advises.
I was talking to him today. He was quite flexible about that. It's not, it's not a hard cutoff deadline either. It's not like we're going to suddenly sever and take the link down. But we are encouraging people to do that. And Sean has a, a full update on, on where we're at with the superintendent's search at this time.
I just, I have something quick on an item that we, the esports clubs. Can we just touch on that really quickly? As, we'll be voting on that next, not next week, when our meeting is. So we're expecting to spend roughly $90,000 for equipment for this club, correct? Is that at both schools separately or I assume or such, but?
I believe it is. Again, we did provide a memo to the board.
Yes, I have that pulled up.
Probably multiple times, I think. Again, per policy 122, which is extracurricular activities, it does go in to say that, you know, that a, a club is, is considered sponsored by the board when it's approved by, by the superintendent and reported to the board. But because of the financial impact of this, we wanted to present it to the board. So we did budget $90,000 for the initial startup equipment related to the, the computers and such that will be necessary for this program. Coming with that obviously is the staff hours associated with it. We had calculated, I believe, at the new contractual hourly rate of teachers of $33, just to be about approximately $2,200 annually, based on the, the hours that Ms. Miller estimated. That will be covered on Mr. DeLuca's secondary budget.
Does this bring up any of the conversation, I suppose, about, I, I know we always hear about other clubs and not having funds and things like that. So just because this is a new club that we'll be spending a lot of money on, which I'm for, I have experience with at my previous job and such. I guess I'm just, I guess slightly concerned with so much money going to one area. I mean, hopefully we have the students who participate in it and such. Do we have any information about like, maybe our students that participated in esports at the local colleges or anything like that? Do we know that there will definitely be enough students to?
The interest that you're expecting? I, I will have to connect with Ms. Miller on that. I can certainly get more information from the board.
Okay, thank you.
Are we able to have that pulled from the, the consent agenda for next week?
Certainly.
Sure.
With esports?
Yeah, just in case you have more questions.
Again, the $90,000, again, while it is a significant amount of funding, I mean, essentially nothing is one time, but once we invest in the, the equipment, we shall have it for a few years, obviously.
And that was my other thought, but I, I understand how quick technology goes out of date. But I know that there were other local colleges that, that do have to get rid of the equipment more quickly because they are, the level they're competing in. So I was wondering if any of those conversations have occurred either, if they have any equipment that's still really usable that we could maybe use to get started with the club?
Okay.
Just thoughts. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to operations, Carol.
I'm over here. I used to be over there. I'm over here now.
This is not fair to old people, okay?
All right, we have quite a few items, so hold on, everybody. All right, so the first one, discussion is summer construction updates. I'm not sure, Mr. Lafferty, are you handling that or is Mr. Rucker handling that?
Oh, hang on, we have.
I had an answer for you for the esports.
Oh, great.
Sorry, I was listening upstairs. I work it. Apologize, I just ran down.
That's so nice of you.
Over the last two years, we've been working with Ted Delaney at Lackawanna College. We have had over 130-some students register for different esports competitions ranging from Rocket League, Valor, I am so sorry, I'm a hot mess.
You ran down here, it's okay.
Let's see, Rocket League, Valor, Apex Legends, and a variety of different esports games, including Smash Brothers. We even this year added a different organization working through Lackawanna College in their esports Angiennelli Theater. Even had our middle school students be able to participate. And so I know myself, I've gone to almost all of the esports competitions. They have been great with hosting it and we're looking to expand. A lot of the local districts are also expanding and looking at starting a league. So I've also been working with IU19. I know Abington School District, Riverside, I think Valley View, North Pocono, Delaware Valley. A couple other ones also have esports teams that they're trying to get up and running or in some degree have running already and are competing. And so we're looking to start hopefully a local league to get these students out there. Lackawanna College is even offering full scholarships. I believe they offered two or three of them last year to students on esports to be able to run their school. So this is something that I know there's a lot of students who are interested in and that we have been talking about. It's, I was still in the classroom at the time for two years when this became an initial conversation under, I believe Paul Doherty was still here in the district when this started as a conversation. And so it's just kind of grown since there. And we've been able to budget for it, plan for it, find spaces for it, learn enough about it, and we have a lot of interest.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for making you run.
I think, I think you had.
You're such a dedicated employee.
I think you had those scholarships, Toner. I think you had us right there. It sounds like an excellent project, as long as it doesn't, you know, it sounds like it's, it's another great addition to our sports. I think it's a PIA, PIA double A sport, isn't it now?
I mean, I know it grows every year, so.
Oh, it's big on the college level.
It's massive. I believe Lackawanna College, even Marywood University have been spending millions on their theaters and getting their programs up and running. It, it's big.
Oh, I know. You can make a pretty buck with it too if you get good, right? After.
Yes.
Oh, no.
The greatest use for the opposable thumb.
I guess. And it, and it is really nice too. A lot of the students who do participate in this are students who haven't participated in things in the past. And so I have a lot of STEM students that went to this last one that they opened up to middle school. And I had, out of like the eight kids that went, six of them were kids I have not been able to get to do anything after school. And they're the ones that showed up. And I, one of them, just from personal experience, is quiet as a mouse, doesn't say a word. That kid was hooting and hollering, yelling, like he was the star of the show that night. And it was absolutely, I was elated to see that, to see like he had his niche and he had his like groove with that crew that he didn't have anywhere else.
I, I mean, I think to the conversations that were had earlier about disciplinary issues and stuff, it's about finding the place that every student feels they belong and so I think that's a, a good point to it. Thank you. Thanks for your work on it.
Thank you.
Since we're back on this, may I just ask one nitpicky question? Pat, you mentioned that a, a club would be authorized by the board if it was authorized by the superintendent and reported to the board. Can we just make sure that we're not opening Pandora's box that we don't need to in terms of this coming before the board? And just make sure that there's a policy reason that we are taking this action?
I think when Ms. Miller and I initially put together the memorandum, it was directed to Superintendent McTirney, who subsequently added it to this agenda. So I, I will certainly look at it whether this is an action that actually needs to be taken.
Thank you. Okay. So, Carol?
Okay, back to operations. So we have a discussion on summer construction updates. I'm not sure, Mr. Lafferty, are you handling that or is Mr. Rucker?
I'm going to ask Ethan from Dewey to assist with this. He is in attendance this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started on a construction update, I believe there was a question earlier about the permits for the city. Do we want to discuss that as well?
Well, there was a discussion, yes.
Okay, so.
We can take a recess.
Just to go over the permit process, so when drawings are completed, they're sent out to bid to contractors. Once we receive the bids, the board approves the project to the lowest qualified contractor. At that point, the school district enters into a contract with the contractor at a stipulated sum. That stipulated sum is the basis for the permit cost with the city. So the city has a fee schedule based on the amount of the project. No project can be started in the city of Scranton without a permit. As far as the permit fees go, we've asked the city for a reduction. I believe that is still in process with legal team. However, I do want to point out that there's even a budget tonight up for approval for the upcoming board meeting. Within that budget, we have a line item for approvals, permits, and inspections. So it's in every budget. it's in every budget for every project that we do with the district, so it, we include that cost, so it's not a surprise. Does that help explain the, the process? Okay. Um, getting into a construction update, so, uh, we did have two inspections today at the Armstrong Elementary School, plumbing and HVAC, those passed. Tomorrow, we have two more inspections with the city, um, that is for the general construction and the electrical construction. That is scheduled for noon.
Is that for Armstrong as well?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, is that for Armstrong as well?
This is for Armstrong.
Yeah, I'm just making sure we didn't switch schools, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, once the occupancy permit is given, um, the building's free to, to use and be occupied especially by the students.
Do you know how long that takes from the time the approval, if, assuming, assuming we pass tomorrow, um, how long does that take for the occupancy permit, since we have to get these teachers and kids in?
Uh, it's just an occupancy, um, certificate of occupancy.
Right.
Um, as soon as they sign the paper at, whenever the inspection is complete, that, that's in effect.
So it goes into effect immediately?
It goes into effect immediately.
Okay, so we don't have to then wait another day?
No.
Do you know if they're coming earlier? You know that some of the teachers are, you know, are anxious to get in their buildings. Um, do you know if it's scheduled for earlier tomorrow or later?
It's at noon.
It's at noon? So then we should know afternoon whether or not the teachers can enter Armstrong to get started on their classrooms?
That's correct. I'm not anticipating any problems with the inspections, since the city was there to, today, to do the inspection, it's just the way the schedule worked out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, okay, moving on, Robert Morris Elementary School, that is being, um, cleaned as we speak. The classrooms are finished, the furniture is then in them, and the teachers' desks and all of the appliances that go with learning instruction are installed. The corridor is being cleaned tomorrow, at which point that school will be, uh, ready for inspection as well.
Excuse me, quick question. I was in Robert Morris on Friday, did they put that furniture in over the weekend? Cause I didn't see any furniture in a lot of the-
The furniture's there today, I walked through. I don't know at what point the school district installed, or brought the furniture out of storage. I know, I was there Thursday, there were three classrooms with furniture in them, student desks.
I think you were there on Thursday.
It was a Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, I was there with Thursday's Director McAndrew, and I, Rock, I went with Rob Rucker and the principal, and there were a lot of classrooms that were not functioning yet, what I would call functioning at the time.
I believe you were before me that day, I was there at one o'clock, and there was furniture installed.
And then, um, so the inspection, then we would, that would follow up with a certificate of occupancy as well, then?
Uh, no, for, for Robert Morris, because it's phased construction, um, we won't get a, a complete certificate of occupancy until the project's completely done.
Okay.
But we will get a temporary, uh, certificate, um, as the construction goes, but it's just for this phase of construction.
All right, so that should be tomorrow as well, then?
Uh, it, it needs to be scheduled. I may be able to get it scheduled tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest.
Okay, so the teachers are not, are they allowed in the building at this point, or they have not been?
Well, that's a little bit different scenario there, because there's classrooms that we did not touch, so, um, for the most part, the teachers have been able to come and go.
Okay, so that's not a problem there?
Yeah, that's a little bit different than Armstrong.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm just going to say, please don't say it's not a problem there, because I meant with the Morris teachers this morning.
She shouldn't be calling out.
So, uh, moving on, uh, the STEM is, uh, going to be wrapping up in the next couple days.
The STEM?
The ceiling tiles will be, uh, the, the tiles that go into the ceiling will be installed tomorrow. Um, that'll help out the cosmetic portion of how the space looks, and there's some electrical work that's ongoing. That will be completed in time for students.
Okay.
I, that covers basically our major projects. West Scranton Intermediate School, um, that, that, that school's under renovation, however, there's really no work going on except for in that fifth grade classroom area up front. Um, that work will continue, so it's just a matter of installing some of the temporary partitions, which were being installed today.
And we shouldn't have any problem with the, uh, the workers mingling with the ki- like, they're completely separated, right?
They're completely separated.
And they all have badges? I know we discussed that last year.
Yes, they all have badges.
And clearances.
Well, the ones that don't have badges won't be allowed access to site.
They won't, and they all have clearances?
Yes.
I know, but I had to ask. Are there any other summer construction updates, that anybody has any questions?
Ethan, just to clarify, so any project that will extend beyond the start of the school year, are projects like Western Intermediate Roof that will not affect the start of the school year?
That's correct.
Or an HVAC work that may occur on the roof, but again, will not impact the start of the school year?
That's correct. We do have some ongoing projects that aren't, um, as a whole, going to wrap up, but the students will be able to come back, the schools will be open, essentially.
What about the internet? Was, again, I heard that there was possibly the wrong wire put in Robert Morris. Will we have the internet service up and available?
I can't speak to the internet, I can tell you that the contractors completed the work, um, per the contract, in that internet, uh, closet. It has a floor, it has four outlets, and it will have a door.
Mr. Rucker, can you address that issue with the Robert Morris internet, please?
Can you please restate the question? Sorry, I was dealing with something else.
Basically, will we be able to, I know you were looking for that wire-
Yes.
Were you able to locate it? If not, do we have a workaround, so that day one, when the students are there?
Yeah, I believe, as it stands right now, the last update I had is that Zito will be coming out, um, trying to get ahold of them to have them on-site tomorrow, so we're really gonna push that issue with them.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions about the summer update work for Ethan or Rob? Any further questions? I think, um, we've done an enormous amount of construction in the last few years, there's a huge amount gone on, and I think that, um, having done construction projects myself, we've done very, very well, and we will have the schools open, and I think that, let's hope that we can continue and continue making good buildings for our kids.
So, on, on that subject, I just want to say a special thanks to the Scranton School District for all of the hard work that their team has also put into these renovations, the, uh, support staff, the custodians, building supervisors, they have all worked tire, tirelessly this summer in moving furniture, cleaning and prep, and also just assisting with some of the construction projects, um, to help us make our schedules, so special thanks to you.
Well, that's great to hear, Ethan, thank you very, very much indeed. Anything further on that one? Carol?
Okay, um, motion to approve change order GC dash CO dash zero zero two, final payment and credit change order to return unused project material for number zero three three zero one three, Memorial, Memorial Stadium bleachers, uh, for fourteen thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Okay.
Second.
Do you have any questions?
I thought we were on, I'm ready to vote.
It's okay, you're a little, there was a lot going on.
Yeah, that's a credit, is it? Cause it's got the magic brackets around it.
If it's already, since we're getting money back, can we put that on consent?
Yeah. Yes, any objections? Let's pop that on consent, please, Gina.
Yeah, put that on consent, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Discussion motions, Scranton High Security Gates.
I can take that one.
All right.
Prior to, uh, Mr. Baker's departure from the district, he was researching or looking into potentially roll-up security gates here for the Scranton High School. Um, he was proposing the installation of, of two roll-up gates, um, one of them near the main entrance here, near the medical room, and the other one, I believe, down at the nanit, nannatorium viewing balcony, which would be down the hallway. Um, he had begun to get some quotes from some vendors, uh, they were, uh, we did receive one quote, and then I think we had two vendors decline to quote for that work. Um, it is, we are in, he did contact a vendor who does operate under a cooperative purchasing contract. The quotes that he did receive were in around the forty-seven thousand dollar range. Um, I've yet to receive the quote from the cooperative purchasing company, I will follow up with them again. Um, they did indicate that this work can be done after school opens or, or on weekends. So there's more information to follow prior to the September eleventh meeting.
Is that forty-seven thousand per gate, or in total?
Total.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Cause originally, um, last year, when he first was hired, we thought it was gonna be, you know, a higher sum of money, like, a hundred thousand or something.
Um, let me verify that, but I, I believe it was forty, for the whole entire project, I could be wrong.
Okay, cause I remember-
I can add to that. I, at one point, we believed that with the installation of the gate, we would have to do some modifications to sprinkler system. We found out after doing the site surveys that that would not be necessary-
Oh, good.
-which is what reduced that price.
Okay, all right, so that lowered the price, then?
Yes, ma'am.
That's good, all right.
And we would utilize, uh, our capital project funds for this project.
What, what are we using, capital?
Our capital funds for this. It wouldn't be our operations or safety and security budget, it would be our capital project fund.
Okay. Okay. Uh, well, no, because, no, not for the gates, not consent, cause we still have to get all the information, so I don't think we should consent to that, uh, cause I don't know what it is. Um, okay, motion to approve advertising contracts, who's gonna handle?
I'll, I'll speak to that as well. Um, Ms. Toy has been working all summer very diligently, uh, trying to revitalize our marketing program. Um, we've, we, uh, as, as you know, we've had partners in the past, we've, we've reached out to, to many of them to see if they'd be interested in renewing a partnership with us. Um, at, at this point in time, we do have potentially one, um, which would be, um, a new contract with the district for, uh, be two advertising signs at our softball field, approximately a thousand dollars in value. In addition to that commitment, there would be a, a preferred partner relationship, which we have some paperwork on, um, that would allow our students and staff some, um, resources related to financial education and, um, and some financial, um, tools, uh, that would come with it also. Uh, the final contract language, I think, is still being reviewed, um, but we look forward to possibly bringing that to the board, uh, for September.
Okay, I don't think we should put that on the consent, cause there may be questions.
For, for the ads that aren't, that are up, are we gonna take them down finally, or?
That is the, that is the plan. Um, obviously, as you know, uh, the operations department has been working very hard this summer on many, on many other items. But, uh, Mr. Rucker and I have been discussing that, uh, beginning to remove them, and, um, uh, hopefully, uh, coming up with, with more partners.
It's on the list.
The big list.
The big list. Um, I, I'm very glad that you focused on what you focused on this summer, um, and we will eventually get to them on the list, but it will be great, too, to see, and I, I'm very pleased to hear that Ms. Toy has been working that hard, because, um, we got a lot of people, we can use the money.
I agree.
That's true. Okay, motion to approve, okay, project budget for project number zero three three zero three three, elevator replacement at West High, Northeast Intermediate, and South Intermediate. Total cost estimate, two million, eight hundred ninety-two thousand and ninety-eight cents. Cost previously approved March twenty twenty-three in the amount of eight hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars for West High only. But I guess at that time, we also had talked about looking at those other-
I actually went back and reviewed some meeting minutes, there was actually even some public comment-
Yes.
-related to that as well.
I was just gonna say that, thank you for taking that extra step.
That there was some public comment related to, uh, I believe, looking at potentially Northeast Elevator and South as, as well, so-
Before we have the same, we're in the same pickle.
Yes, yeah, I'm glad that you did that.
And so, obviously, Ethan and the team from Dewey, uh, you know, as our practice is, before we prepare any design, we're, prepare bids, we want the board to approve the estimated project budget, which is what, which is what they prepared for the combined project. Um, I, I do know, Ethan, you know, and in March, when we discussed this, there could be some, you know, savings related to bundling the project, um, and possibly also an alternative that, you know, we may, depending on bids, select one, two, or all three, correct?
That's correct. We're allowing the district flexibility on their choice of Contract One, which would be one of the schools, Contract Two, another school, or Contract Three, the third school, or option, basically, four is all three contracts combined for what should be a lesser price than the addition of one plus two plus three.
And I, I just want to say on that, I, I think we need to take a long, hard look at what happened at West High, that they went, what, was it the whole year, three-quarters of a year?
No, we're still going.
With no elevators, so, I, I would hate to see us not do something like this and then have Northeast and South in that same position, because I know it was not only hard on students and staff, but, you know, all of our, our maintenance workers who were carrying supplies upstairs to that cafeteria, like, it's just such a burden on, on everybody, so if we can be proactive and do that, listening to public comment, listening to staff, I think that's the right direction to go in. On that note, though, where do we stand? Like, can we do this right away with West? I mean, at least with West, since it, theirs isn't working?
Well, right now, what they're doing is, with preparing the budget, we'll have an RFP submitted out this coming up month, and hopefully have something ready for you at the October board meeting. So right now, we have to publicly bid it.
So we, we, we were waiting for a part, was that it?
No, the part that failed at West High School, pretty much, they don't make anymore, and it was extremely expensive to come up with a part that would kind of work.
Okay.
Um, it was putting a Band-Aid on a, on a big wound.
Right, you decided to replace it.
So, yeah, it was a significant cost to try to replace that part. Yeah, in addition to, we would've had to made some structural changes to the, get the part out and put the new one in.
Okay.
I'd like to see us make this a priority. I mean, I, I do want to go ahead with all three, that's just my opinion, but I think we really need to do what we can to get, if, if there's anything that we can do as a board to move the RFP along quickly, like, we just can't leave our students and staff over there without an elevator.
What's our ETA? Let's just say we approve it at the next board meeting, right? We're talking about-
That's what I was gonna ask, if, if the board acts on this-
If we ask, if we approve it at the next board meeting, at least West, to move forward with West, cause that one, we have to replace, what's our timeframe, what's our ETA here?
So, we've actually been working on the design, it's almost complete. We're waiting on some input from one of the elevator manufacturers.
Okay.
Um, as soon as we have that, we're ready to go out for, for bid process.
Okay.
And I, I think it's extremely wise that we don't wait until Northeast and, um-
Right.
-South are, are out of, completely out of action before we move. I mean, this is the twenty-first century, and really, these are like elevators that have little men that work them.
They're original.
Yeah.
I, I'm one of nine, but if there's any way we can reach out to that elevator company, um, if my colleagues agree, to get their input for whatever you need to really fast-track this as best we can, um, I, I think that the students and staff of West would really, really appreciate that. I know you have a lot of fast-track items and a lot of asks, so.
Um, we only have one elevator in each of those buildings, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, we, I know West is a separate issue from the other two. Um, if we approve the other two, would they be, how long does it take? Would it be something that would be done in the summer? Because it would be down for three weeks, like, do you have any idea from start to finish how long it takes? Once we take the, decommission the elevator and take it out of service, how long does and take it out of service, how long does it take before the new elevator?
The elevator itself is roughly one to two months. It's not a lot of time.
So, we would have to do it, we would choose, if it didn't break in the meantime, to do it next summer. The other two, not West, obviously, that one, we wanna do.
I, I don't, it probably depends on if it could be done with students in there.
Right.
I don't know.
Is it something that could be done while the students are in school?
Um, there's some work that we would have to do after hours. There's some structural work that has to be done for the support. Um, right now, the elevator motor is in the attic. It's very difficult to get to, and being that it's from original vintage to the building, it's solid brass.
So, basically, the building was built around the elevator?
Yeah, the elevator was one of the first items built, probably.
Yeah, it sounds that way.
So, I guess we'll.
Cash in the brass.
I guess where we're at is, fast-track it if you possibly can, and please come back to us as soon as you can. Um, this is, it's ADA and it's safety, and, uh, it's, we've, it's, it's beautiful old elevators that don't work anymore.
Outlive their usefulness.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Motion to approve change order in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars to datum. I'm not sure, am I saying that correctly? Datum, um, for removal of plaster ACM ceilings in the auditorium of West High and South Intermediate to provide for installation of HVAC diffusers and grills for the new AC systems.
So, this change order is for the district-wide HVAC project. However, the, the change order won't go to that contract. It's being applied to the district-wide abatement project, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and it's, it's basically to remove some asbestos plaster in the ceilings of South Intermediate and West High School, so that the, the diffusers, which you see in this space, can be installed to provide the cooling.
So, we will then have AC at West Scranton High School and South Intermediate's auditoriums?
That's correct.
Okay.
Wow, that's great.
Um, as the board gave consensus to this earlier, could we agree to move this to the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
If that's all right? We, we, we did get consensus before we moved ahead with this, because we kinda had to do it in a hurry.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Nobody has any objections. Uh, motion to approve change order GCC zero 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 three in the amount of fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars for project number zero three three, zero three two, Robert Morris renovations for ceramic floor and wall tile replacements in first and second floor gang restrooms due to extent of cutting required to remove inaccessible asbestos-containing material.
The gang? What did, can we?
It is two, three bath, it's, they're all boys' rooms. They call them gang bathrooms, because there's several toilets.
Possibly an unfortunate term.
Yeah, well, true, an unfortunate term, but that's what they call it.
Okay.
In the plumbing trade.
Thank you. Did not know that.
And I think if, in the board packet, you were given some photos of what those bathrooms loo- look like in this work is definitely, uh, necessary.
It was there, I think, um, that's fine. I think we also go.
Is this something that we could move to the consent agenda? Does anybody have any objections?
We did give consensus for that one also, so.
Yeah, I mean, we kinda have to do that.
If we may.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Informational, GCC zero 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 three, no-cost change order for project number zero three three, zero one nine, West Intermediate roof replacement to amend the substantial and final completion dates due to weather conditions. So, that was just pushed a couple days, right?
Yeah, it's pushed a couple days just because of all the rain that we've had this summer. And actually, that, um, I didn't really give an update on the roof, but the roof at West Scranton Intermediate School has three days to go.
Yay.
So, um, there, there'll still be some cosmetic work with the, um, flashings around the perimeter, but the, the work to put the, uh, flood, uh, adhere layer in the, in the stone onto the roof needs three days. And I can't give you a timeline as to when it will can be complete, because I need three
Dry.
good weather days.
I can tell you that I live right near there, and those contractors are up there every night, working very hard. Um, I, I can see them from my house, and their lights are very, very bright in my house at night, but it's okay, because I know they're getting it done, so. And they're very quiet, too, I have to say.
Mr. Rucker, no more climbing on the roof in the middle of a Sunday night in the pouring rain. I'm sure you're very happy.
Yeah.
I believe Mr. McAndrew, Director McAndrew and Director Holmes joined you one evening. So, I think we could add that to the consent agenda. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Consent agenda as well.
Can, can I say how thrilling it is to be at the end of a project that we all, that all of us pretty much saw at the inception, and to know that, that, you know, we are just making such progress in getting that building done, and it's very exciting, and thank you.
So, while we're here, can we cover that, the issue of permits and permit fees and how that works? Just a very general explanation would be great.
I thought you did it at the beginning.
Just overall, generic. How does, how does it work when we applied for a permit fee to the city?
Um, sure.
Thank you.
Basically, we, we, um, prepare drawings, and, uh, we send them out to bids, at which time, um, contractors bid on them. We, we receive the bids. The board approves the lowest responsible bidder for that project. At that time, the school board enters into, um, a contractual agreement with the contractor, and the price is a stipulated sum. That stipulated sum is then the basis for the permit fee and inspection fee with the city. Um, just to reiterate that, no work can begin until we get the permit from the city. Um, and as I mentioned, um, in this budget for the elevator, you'll see a line item in there of thirty thousand dollars for the permit for that project. So, it's included in the project budget. Um, the only thing that we do that may be a little different is, because we don't know the permit fee, the exact permit fee for the city of Scranton, we have the contractor pay for the permit, and then we basically reimburse them the cost of the permit through a, a no-cost change, uh, no markup change order.
That's why we have so many change orders.
Yeah, all of the, you know, most of the, the change orders that, um, we bring to the board are for permits.
Okay.
And Mr. Laffey, it's correct, right, that we did reach out to the city on several occasions, and they did just put out a new, lower discounted permit fee schedule?
That is correct.
And, and we did explain to them that this is taxpayer money, and we were told that was the schedule by the city that we had to pay those permit fees based on.
That is accurate.
So, I guess if we wanna get it lower, that somebody will have to go to the city.
John.
So, counseling to them.
I guess, in other districts you, you know, work in, do, does the city normally give them permit fees to the school district when they make, no?
They don't?
Is there a legal route? Because it's, you know, we're technically a nonprofit.
Is there a legal route?
Yes.
I mean, not really. I mean, um, you know, most of those permit, uh, monies, uh, they pay out to inspectors and, um, the, you know, various engineers, staff, that kinda thing. I mean, am I correct, uh?
So, the basis for the, the permit cost is mostly for the inspection fees and the drawing review. So, when we send the drawings to the city, they turn them over to a, a third-party cons- uh, inspection consultant, which up here i- i- in Scranton is Northeast Inspection Consultants, NEIC. Uh, they perform a drawing review, and they make sure that what they see on the plans matches what the requirement of the current building code is. Then they'll issue the permit. Um, once they issue the permit, construction gets started. They'll come out and do various inspections throughout the project. So, they will come out and inspect rebar. They will inspect concrete. They will inspect drywall to, to make sure, yeah, electrical's a big one, too, to make sure that it's being installed per the plans and per the code. Um, and then, that's the basis. Once they do all these inspections, they come out and do their final inspection, which is what we're doing right now at Robert Morris. They walk through one final time, make sure everything meets their expectations, and they issue the permit.
That's incredibly helpful, because I think we, we talk about permitting fees as sort of this nebulous situation.
It's like, it goes into the abyss.
And I, I think to understand that it is not
They have costs.
just going into the city coffers. They have costs associated with this process. And, I mean, everything you are describing is time, uh, you know, a resource of time of, of, I'm sure certifications these people need to have, and that comes at a cost, whether it's through their hourly rate, or, you know, something that, that needs to, to be compensated. So, that, thank you very much.
No problem.
Something that's always kind of.
And it's the same for boroughs, cities, townships. They, they all do the same process.
Well, at least, at least they've dropped it a little.
Right. Thank you.
We'll, we'll eventually get the whole permit fee thing. Maybe not, but we'll keep trying. The poor guy has explained it like six times.
We'll keep trying.
We did have a little confused, as you were talking, I thought you went over this before. We had a little confusion on this side of the table, so we, I think we were all nodding along and didn't hear a word you said, so thank you for reiterating that.
No problem.
Thank you. And, and the one thing is, is I think it's always, I've always resented the fees that you don't see anything tangible for, but at least we now know that there are tangible things that go in with it.
It costs them money to send people in, so. All right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, discussion on polling locations. Doctor, uh, doctor, I just gave you a promotion.
Thank you. I will take it.
Will you take up, Dr. Kilmore?
There are a few other titles I might like, too. I'll give you a list. I'm sure many that have been given to me. I, I got a call from the, uh, Board of Elections, from the Director of the Elections Department, Beth Hopkins, and she just was not sure in our transition, uh, period with the superintendent to whom she should reach out, and I told her that we would be clarifying that information this evening. But I think they are just wanting to ensure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, especially in light of the situation with Robert Morris at, at the last election. So, I just said to her that I would bring this forward just as a point of information for this evening. I think they may be looking at some other polling locations. There may be some other requirements that are being put upon them. So, Pat, I would either, I can certainly call Beth and, and tell her to reach out to you, or if you wanna have the appropriate person from the district reach out to them, just to make sure that if there's any action that the board needs to take, we're prepared to do it either next month or in October, so it's timely for, you know, their advertising and their notice needs. But I also realize this may be covered under our facilities use policy, and there may be no other action that we need to take.
I will reach out to them tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And thank you, Doctor Kilmore.
Absolutely.
A discussion. I'm not sure we can, maybe you can handle that? Uh, the ticket sales at the high school reporting event, Mr. General Eszter.
This is, this is when I asked to be on the agenda, so, you wanna take it?
Certainly, yeah. Um, as you recall, last year, I believe last October, uh, the board approved the use of Hometown Ticketing, which is, obviously, it's an electronic ticketing service. Um, it's, it's, I think it's gaining popularity, uh, throughout the area. It's, and I think it's the sole, uh, ticketing mechanism for the PIAA playoff, uh, format. Um, at that time, there was obviously a lot of discussion related to any fees associated with it, so the board, um, opted to, um, still remain with a cash option. So, we offer both. There is the electronic option, and there is the cash option. Um, I will know, you know, the, at that time, I think some of the principals and the ADs, um, saw some advantages with this program, um, and, um, uh, but there are fees associated with it, you know, so there's a, uh, there's, and they're passed on to the customer. So, there's about a dollar fee for a single ticket, um, and then a thirty percent, I'm sorry, or up to a two-point-nine percent fee as well. So, our two-dollar ticket, uh, for a student actually goes to three dollars and thirty-six cents, and a four-dollar ticket for, um, an adult is approximately five dollars and forty-two cents. So, at that time, when that was approved, the board said we would pilot it for one year, and then come back and look at it, and kinda make a decision on how we wanna move forward. Uh, because we didn't have Hometown Ticketing up and running for the fall sports, it didn't launch until the winter sports for basketball, this year, we are operating football, fall football, um, with both options as, as well. So, we, we, uh, we did have our first game on Friday night. Obviously, as, as you are aware, um, Hometown Ticketing, uh, the, the use of Hometown Ticketing was available. Um, and, uh, we, according to the, uh, reports that we're able to generate through that app, we sold about eighty-seven tickets that evening, um, on, on, uh, on the Hometown App. I think what we saw with the lines of people coming into the game, they, I think they were purchasing them on the spot to kind of get into the stadium like a little quicker.
You said eighty-seven went through the app?
Yeah.
How many were sold total?
I don't have that information, but abs- there was a decent crowd that night, so there was much more, uh, cash op- uh, cash participants than there was.
And, and I think that's important, that we put that out there, that the cash option is available. Um, there, there were a lot of complaints on social media saying, you know, that the school district shouldn't be using this site. We're not getting any of that extra money. This was just a convenience for people to purchase their tickets, so the, the extra fees are going to the Hometown.
Correct.
Right.
It's not just Hometown, it's also the, um, ACH Processing Company, which I believe is.
So, people have the option to go and purchase their cash ticket at the, the going rate. There's no additional fees associated with paying cash.
And, and that'll still go for the basketball games, because I know that was confusion on the West side.
So, I think my, what I envisioned was, if the, and I don't have, I apologize, I think it's, you know, Mr. General Eszter showed me this schedule in his office. If the fall sports schedule ends around November first, the winter season, when we would be charging for events, wouldn't start until approximately December first. So, we would have about a month in that time for us to kinda gather information for the board, if they wanted, you know, to see, you know, a full year's worth of activity, not just one game and, um, you know, o- over the summer.
I wonder if that's something that, that perhaps administration or Sydney could gather some feedback from the community, rather. I mean, I'd like to hear from the community if, if that's something that you could come up with a way to present to us, how the community can let us know. Do they want us to continue this or not?
Absolutely. We, we, we could look into that. And the one thing I, I will note, uh, you know, I think, um, you know, obviously, the fees were, what we're discussing, um, there is the ability to purchase a season's pass as, as well, which would obviously cut down on some of that as well, also.
Okay.
So, there is a, you, you can still have the convenience of the electronic ticketing system, um, with a little bit of a lower cost by purchasing a season ticket if you, uh, you know, if you plan on attending all the home games.
So, just to clarify, it has not yet been decided if there will be a time when there is no cash option.
Correct.
I think that's where there's confusion, that there's already a day and time chosen for this, but it's something we'll evaluate.
That's what I saw, that's why I wanted to put it on. Yeah, I wanted to make sure we're still in the, the data gathering phase, and there will be cash options as.
I think last year, when we discussed it, we talked about eventually maybe not having cash, but it sounds like there's still enough people that are, at least not, I don't think, it doesn't sound from numbers that anyone's ready to give up the cash option.
Well, last time you asked if there was a way they could keep track of, I pulled up the minutes.
I did.
Of that somehow, to see if online increases as the year goes on, because she can see they might get an overall average of cash for online purchases. Um, and Mr. Laffey stated that there is a really nice monthly reporting feature, which I guess we will see once we get the full year. I was just, I think there was, um, people thought that maybe we didn't care about the students who might not have the option to pay other than cash, but obviously, we still feel the way we did then, that we need all information in front of us before making any type of decision like that.
Yeah, again, I think we'll, we'll have about a month before, um, you know, in between the ending of one season and the starting of, 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 of the next. And, uh, you know, not just on your, there's, they can purchase them right there at the stadium, so they, they don't have to do it from their computer at home. They can be in line, and I think there's a QR code right there.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ajay.
On that note, I believe I'm done.
A marathon.
I told everybody to hold on, it was gonna be long.
All right.
Now, we move to personnel.
All right. So, first is, we have a motion to approve the personnel report. We have a motion, any questions on that? We have a motion to approve, um, uncompensated leave of absence for employee number three six five two. And then, we're gonna have a discussion, which is an update on the superintendent's search.
I wonder if we could just have, uh, Mr. Wolf give us a, I know we received this in our packet, but maybe just a summary of where we stand with our open positions as we are about to start the new school year?
Good evening. Yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to give you an update. Um, the information that I presented to you in the week, we, weekly packet, I think, had eight current vacancies. Um, our principals, our central-level administrators, especially our special education department, have worked extremely hard. I think we're down to three as of today, three current vacancies, and we're working on a plan to have a teacher in every single classroom on day one. Um, if, at eight vacancies, it was ninety-nine, a little over ninety-nine percent fully staffed. So, I'm very happy with, with the work that the principals have done, recommending them, and a special, uh, shout-out to our special education department. It's a very, very, those are difficult, uh, difficult to fill, positions to fill, and they've worked very, very hard to fill those spots. So, we're at about two or three right now, but it's, it's fluid, but we're at about two or three right now, as of today.
Compared, compared to last year, where are we at? Where are we at this part of last year? Remember off the top of your head?
Uh, no. I don't know off the top of my head.
I know it's a lot more than that, so I guess my question.
My head was going, my head was going at least seven thousand miles an hour last year. It's at about five hundred and fifty.
So, I guess, like, you know, what, what were the positives to, this year, being, you know, better staff right now at this time? Like, what, sorry, what would, like, the, what stuff that attributes, factors?
What factors led to this, essentially? Yes. I, I think that, uh, contract negotiations with SFT and, and the work that we did with SFT, Mr. Laffey, uh, Dr. Finan, uh, Ms. Boland and her team, I think that has helped a lot. I think that, uh, that stability.
Attorney Freund.
Sorry?
Attorney Freund.
Attorney Freund.
I didn't read it in there.
Good work, Attorney Freund. Sorry. Get to next time. Uh, so, I think that's a variable. I think that, that HR, uh, our principals, special education worked very, very hard to get an open positions list significantly earlier than we have in the past, so that allowed us to award bids, to do all the internal operations, and then get, uh, that information out, uh, the open positions out to the public earlier, uh, to increase our ability to hire.
Perfect.
We also did some advertising, too.
Yeah.
Great work.
Teaching Scranton changed the world.
Radio ads were nice.
Yeah, radio ads, yeah.
We had Facebook, we had posts. I, I, it was an aggressive approach, and I think that it's paid off. But again, the credit really goes to the principals and, and some of our central-level administrators who have worked hard to get these people in place. administrators who have worked hard to get these people in place.
And a lot of, and a lot of our staff. I know our faculty and staff are out there talking about how, how good things are and how things are improving, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that as well.
I, I would agree with that. We've had a number of, of teachers who left the district, you know, within the last few years, who have returned.
Yes.
And, and we're working, have worked with Mr. Laffey quite a bit, and we're working to kind of stabilize everything so people know that when they come here, great things are going on and that they can stay here.
And I think the new contract, too. I think we're finally beginning to work towards compensation that's never going to be enough because I don't think we can pay teachers enough for what they do. But I do think that having the stability of the new contract and the increases that we were able to bring forward, it was hard work to get financially stable and we're getting there slowly, but at least that to me is probably the greatest benefit that we had, that we can finally at least start, make a start on compensation fairly.
I would agree with that last note. If you recall, last year from, I believe it was May first to August twenty-fourth, we had about a hundred and seventy-five changes in, in positions. That number has significantly reduced this year, so our retention rate is going up, our hiring rate is increasing, so I believe we're in, in better shape today than we were a year ago.
Fantastic.
Well done.
Thank you.
Well done, Mr. Wolf.
All right. So, now I guess we're going to discuss the update on the superintendent search. All right, so, we know that the posting is out there. It's been posted in several outlets, just in, you know, obviously, you know, with us internally on our website and everything, but also the P.A. Association of School Administrators, PEN Link, the Tri-State Study Council at the University of Pittsburgh, LinkedIn, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, the National Alliance of Black School Educators, and Edweek's Top Jobs. And I believe there's more places that will also be posted as well. So, we're casting hopefully a wide net to get a great, a bunch of great candidates. As we spoke earlier on the website, there are surveys in multiple languages. Also, I believe it's posted on social media, on Facebook, and I believe you can get a hard copy at your school to fill out and send back. This is another great way to cast that wide net to get as much feedback from our community. This is a decision that we don't take lightly, that we know that we got to get somebody good in here and it, it's, we need the community's input, because at the end of the day, we're, we're one community and, you know, you know, I think we're doing a different approach than it's ever been done before here in, in other districts, because this is a, a decision that affects every one of us in this community, helps our, you know, the students most importantly, the consumers, but also the parents, teachers, and our taxpayers. Going after that, we will start to shrink in that net that we're casting and do stakeholder, what do you want to call them, focus groups, around sixty-eight, a little bit more of, you know, focused on, obviously, like I said again, the consumers, the students, teachers, paraprofessionals, you know, administrators, principals, anybody in our district. And I believe between those two, you know, data reaches, that we're going to get a lot of good feedback to help determine the best possible choice for this district. If we do need, you know, after getting that data, if we knew, if we need, if we feel the need that we need more, you know, what, there's other possible routes we can take to go get more. But that's pretty much where we're at right now. So, right now, it's a survey, once we get that feedback back, and then I'll start focusing on the focus groups. We have not seen any applications, we're not in the process at all, we will not be attending the focus groups, this will be all run by Templeton, who's the, the service that we contracted out with, that we selected for this. So, I think this has been a nice, fresh approach, a new approach, and I'm hoping that we get a lot of great candidates and it's a, you know, a hard choice to pick from. So, hopefully, we have a great district, we have a great community, and we have great kids, and hopefully, we can paint that picture to attract a great superintendent.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I ask just one question under personnel, and I don't know if anyone can answer this, perhaps you, Mr. Laffey? Where do we stand with the grant writer position that we were, we had someone and then I, I know that they had.
We had a recommended candidate and she was, she declined the position, I think ultimately found, went a different route.
Okay.
I know Ms. Supriani from the, from the city of Scranton has reached out to me, we're going to coordinate reposting that position.
Okay. Thank you.
I do, I'm glad you say that, because she did email me, I have to get back to her, so thank you.
Add it, add it to your list.
Yeah.
Before, as we move on to policy, Tara.
Yes.
These are all first read policies. I haven't had a good chance to read them all yet. I'm, I'm, I apologize if they are all there. We will get a chance to do them as second read. So, we've got eleven policies on first read and one policy on second read. So, over to you, ma'am.
Okay. We will have eleven policies under motion to approve as first read. Zero zero six, meetings, one twenty-one field trips, one sixty, recognition of religious holidays, beliefs and customs, two oh nine, health examinations and screenings, two sixteen point one, supplemental discipline records, two fifty-one, students experiencing homelessness, foster care and other educational instability, seven oh two, gifts, grants, donations, eight hundred, records management, eight fifteen, acceptable use of internet, computer and network resources, eight thirty, security of computerized personnel information slash breach notification, eight thirty point one, data governance and storage security, and we will have one policy under motion to approve for second read, and that's eight sixteen, social media. I'm not sure if I love the idea of them all being listed under one motion.
I think, I think maybe after we've all had a chance to look at them, if we feel we want to pull some out to discuss.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, maybe could they be listed separately? I mean, I don't have a problem with them being under consent, but if they're listed separately under consent, then just one would be pulled.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can make that change. And President, you, Mr. Generalez did prepare a nice summary that I'm sure we can reshare with, like, pretty high level of the, the policies that we just discussed and the purpose of the change that was, that was recommended and, and who actually made that recommended change. So, some of them are PSBA, some of them are internal.
Okay.
And I think we received these in our packets, but they are also in the draft tank under policies on board docs.
Yes.
Highlighted red and green.
Thank you.
For the public as well, right?
Yes.
If you can give me an idiot's card.
Yes. Okay. So, they are, are all there? Okay.
Does the public have access to the draft?
Does the public have access to the drafts? Do we know?
They, I'll check right now.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure about that. You know what, I'm not even going to be able to check, because if I'm signed, yeah, if I'm signed in.
Okay. Well, if not, do, would we, would we publish those with the agenda for the meeting? They would be available with that?
We'll make sure we find a way to make sure the public has access to that.
Okay. Okay. That's good. Okay. While, while Ginny's taking a look at that, I, I had asked that we just have a discussion regarding our board meeting minutes. I know right now, our board secretary, Ginny, works very, very hard and spends many hours detailing every remark that is made, every, everything that everybody says, she documents. So, I would just like to get some feedback from the board regarding minutes, and I specifically asked Ginny to provide some information as to how her counterparts at other schools put together their minutes. I'm not sure if they do it detailed, if they do summer, summarizations.
Most of the districts are, their minutes are much shorter than mine's.
Yeah. Okay. And, and now in what way? So, the public school districts, you're saying?
Right. They, they, they don't give as much detail.
Would they say something like, discussion was held regarding policy zero zero six meeting?
Right. They get right to the point and to the subject of it, the topic, the dirt of the, or the grit of the discussion and move on.
Do those districts also like posted on, so, like YouTube, I guess, or they have like their own YouTube page and stuff?
Yeah, right.
I, I think, I think Sean, you hit exactly what's, what's important. Back in the day when there was no visual recording of, of meetings, I think minutes were the only source of this information. But every public meeting we have is available totally. And I know that this was, I think Director Gil Martin, you were on the board at the time, that there was a change in the format of the meet, of the minutes, and going back to read earlier minutes from the Scranton School District, they were, it seemed to me, more succinct and more comprehensible.
Yes. I think there was an appetite for having more information included in the, the meeting minutes many years ago, but at that point, we weren't recording, I don't believe, I don't believe we were recording our committee meetings. So, I, I mean, I think all of that was part of that discussion. I mean, you're talking about being old and you're asking me to remember six years ago? Come on, lady. I'm crossing over, too. But.
Yeah, everything is recorded in life.
Right. I mean, I think there was just a desire to have as much information as possible, but I agree. I think that given the, the recording that we're able to do, the live streaming we have access to, I, I frankly think it can, I mean, not only is it a burdensome task, but I think it can also be a little bit dangerous, because Ginny doesn't, is, you're not a stenographer, you don't have that equipment. And I think it's too easy to perhaps attribute something to someone or miss something or misinterpret something. I mean, if we get going, it can even be hard to hear the recordings. If, if somebody wants to go back and, and take that time themselves.
They really don't recommend verbatim minutes.
Right. Right. No, I, I mean, my, and again, in other organizations, my experience with minutes is the action, you know, if, if there's significant discussion, maybe, maybe bullet points certainly, you know, any amendments that are made, but then just a, a record of the vote and that's it.
I put way too much information.
TMI, TMI.
I understand, Ginny.
I also think that with all of the duties that are on you, I mean, I can't imagine how many hours you spend trying to take.
Oh, I'll go and I'll listen to this meeting again tomorrow, so I'll relive this. Overall.
Right.
I think we could probably say, Ginny, that the minutes that you prepare of this meeting can be done in a format that is, takes into account the fact that the meeting will be available for anyone who wishes to see it. And the only thing I would ask is that you put at the bottom of the minute, the link to the recording, so that anyone who wishes to go to the recording has that information there, does not have to go searching through YouTube to try and find it. If we do that, is, is that a solution?
I like that, and I also like something with the names, they're, they're very hard to find on YouTube, the meetings, so I'd like a standard.
Yeah, we talked about it. We are working on getting.
Great. And so, it's easy to find, so we know how to find every meeting.
I have, I have discovered some very interesting topics on YouTube while looking for meetings for the Scranton School Board.
I think it's important to note also, though, that what we are discussing right now is more in line with our policy than what our practice currently is. So, you know, that doesn't require any action on our part from a policy standpoint, so.
And I have to be honest, if I have some confusion about something that happened at a meeting, it's not a month, no offense, but it's not when we get the mini meetings, it's the next day, or I get online and I go, I think it was about halfway through.
Sure.
And I'll re-listen to a section and go, okay, if I thought I missed something. So, I tend to, me personally, look at the video if, if I have a question about something that had transpired.
So, if we wanted to make this change, what would we need to do? Nothing? Just?
Would I be able to add my opinion, too?
Yes, but Attorney Freund was speaking, as soon as he finishes. Go ahead, Attorney Freund.
The only thing that's legally required is, it's very bare bones, how everybody voted, the motion, of course, the people who made comments and, and the topics they discussed, that's interesting, I don't have any other topics, but people who make comments.
Public comment or us?
Public comment.
Yes, okay.
You know, what, what their comment was, you don't have to, you know, detail it, just the topic of their comment.
We're supposed to be taking that when they sign in anyway, right? Aren't we?
Right, but it's supposed to be in, in the minutes.
Right, in the minutes, right.
So, and minutes do have a really important, so, many times if there's legal issues, those minutes are, you know, the definitive evidence of what the board's intention was, so. But, you know, the, the verbatim, you know, interstitial comments don't have very much meaning. It's just the vote, and it's, it has to show how everybody voted, though. How everybody voted.
Oh, yeah. But, so, if we go back to your period, your pre-six-year-ago method, Ginny, because I've read those and they were very, more than, they met every criteria there, and I think if we can do that, that would be great. Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like everyone has their mind made up already, so I just wanted to add my opinion. So, anyway, I, Director Gil Martin pointed something out that really, it's something that I experienced watching the meetings, the audio is not that good. I hear all the time that people are having a hard time hearing us, and as far as putting the captions on, it's not always accurate. So, for me, I would like to see it, I would rather give the public more information than take information away, so I would like to see, see it stay the same.
Okay. Well, do we, it's, we can vote on it or we can take, if we have a?
The one thing I, I just wanted to say before that was, I think we get so caught up in the way the world works now, is that this, what we're doing now isn't the way that basically any school districts do it, even before recordings happened. So, bef, we're, we're caught up in the, we record, we record, but minutes were never done like this even before that. So, it gives us an extra layer that would never happen before with the recommended bare bone minutes, so that we don't get ourselves caught up legally in something not quoted directly right or things like that.
I agree. And I think we also forget that these meetings are open to the public.
Right.
And people who are passionate about it and who have a viewpoint to do are very welcome to come, to hear the meetings live, to make their comments and be here. And I think that we, we, you know, can take into account the fact that if people are having trouble, then they're very, very welcome and we really wish the public would attend.
And I think we've also done an excellent job of continuing to improve our setup, our, our audio quality. We've had a great deal of support, I think, staying in a consistent space, the way the table is set, you know, I, I think, and when we need to improve again, we'll do that.
Great.
Can I add something? It's really not policy, but it's based on the conversation that we're having, and I know I've followed up with Ginny several times about a timer, the front and the back. Have we made any progress on that?
A timer.
The timer. So, she's not doing it with her phone and the people who are speaking can see it and she can speak, see it.
I thought we, I thought we approved Balling one, didn't we?
Where we were.
I'm waiting for a purchase order number.
Okay.
Who has to generate the purchase order?
That man over there.
Superintendent.
Oh, my God. And we thought you were perfect.
I will, I will, we will get to it this week.
Because I just think that would make it so much easier for Ginny, for us, because we can see the time, the people who are speaking can see the time, and they know if they have twenty seconds or thirty to speak, you know, to get in what's most important for their, for what they're, you know, they need to get out, so.
So, before we move forward, though, I just want to be completely transparent, I don't want to have my integrity questioned. How are we moving forward, so everybody hears this, we're having this very public discussion? How are we moving forward with the minutes? Do we need a consensus? What do we, or, or?
Well, I think the important thing is that you're, you're doing the minutes consistently with what your policy is. And if you think about it, you just got the secretary direction that we want.
Okay, so let's, let's take a vote. I think that's the best way to do it.
Okay, so we can do a voice vote?
I just want to clarify, though, do we have any issue with a, a formal vote at a, a meeting that we've not advertised?
No, no, I mean, let's put, let's add it, let's add it to our voting meeting.
Okay.
I see what you're saying. Let's add it to our voting meeting.
Sure.
Absolutely. Yes, I think that way, if public, the public wants to comment on it, we're giving them that opportunity.
Are there PSBA guidelines?
The attorney says we don't need to do that.
I know we don't, but I also know that we could be questioned on it, so I would like to put it on as a vote.
In fact, as a request from a director, that is absolutely right, we shall put the motion on the meeting.
Well, you know, the PSBA provides guidelines as to, you know, maybe we should be filing with the PSBA records.
I think, I think we'll put the motion on, and I think we'll get.
What's the motion going to say?
What do you want me to say on the motion?
We'll work it out, we'll, we'll.
I think it has to focus on the policy, you know, that we are.
Double-check with me, because there's a statute that says what's supposed to be on.
Okay. Policy and legal work together.
We reaffirm the principles of governance and leadership on a regular basis, so we are just reaffirming this policy. Maybe we should put those on, too.
Thank you, okay, well, I think, Tara, we now, I have to go back into here, we now move on to special education, Sarah.
I'm sorry, can I have some of the policies removed from the consent agenda, please? I would like 121 field trips, 160, recognition of religious holidays, beliefs and customs, and 816, social media policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add 702, please?
Which one did you say, 702?
So, we're going to 121, 160, 816, and 702.
And as we said, the rest will all be listed separately, so if we wanted to pull them the night of the meeting, we can do that.
Yes, but I think this, I really love the fact that we pull things at the work session rather than on the night of the meeting, it always makes life, makes my life easier.
Probably Ginny's true.
All right.
Are we good?
We're good, Sarah.
Okay. Under special education, we will have a motion to approve settlement agreements, if there are any, and then, under consent, we will have a motion to approve the 2324 MISO Transitional Skills Center Agreement, a motion to approve the 2324 NEIU Intergovernmental Agreement, the 2324 Graham Academy Agreement, the 2023, 2024 In-Term Home Health Staffing Agreement, and the 2324 Pro Care Client Services Agreement, and I believe, Ms., Ms. Jeanette, will you be speaking to any of these?
I will, I can note that the majority of these, I believe, are renewals of current agreements that we have for the 2324 school year, with the exception of Graham, which is, this is a new agreement, and speaking with Ms. Jeanette today, the new contract will, will go into effect for, if we do have settlement agreements, that this will set the base tuition, the base contract rate that will be paid to them, as well as any hourly rates for additional services that students may be required to receive, such as speech or OT, things, things of that nature.
All right, thank you. Okay.
So, just, I just wanted to ask regarding the MISO agreement, why, why is administration recommending that we move forward with renewing that?
This is the Center for Independent Living?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the continuation of our transitional program. Obviously, the students would, as, as part of their, as part of their day, would spend half the day with the school district in, with the Scranton School District, and then spend the other half of the day with the Center for Independent Living. I don't want to speak for Ms. Jeanette, but again, I think that this transitional program, we feel, obviously benefits these, these students, you know, to support them in their life after the Scranton School District.
Would you like to come up and speak to that, Ms. Jeanette?
Yes? Yes, she's coming.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
Hi, the, the SIL program is just one of the many transition programs that we use. Our students go for a half a day, they get half a day of academics in our school district, and then they get the transitional services through SIL. There are several other agencies that we use, but SIL's contract was the one that needed to be renewed. We, we don't offer those services within our district.
So, we don't offer them, and they offer services that you believe our students need.
Yes, and they sat, and that satisfies our compliance for our transition component of our IEPs.
Great, okay.
So, they're all, those placements are all IEP-driven?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, while you're here, could you also address that with the NEIU agreement that we have?
Yes, we've used the NEIU for many years. They have a learning campus in Dumont, which houses multi-handicapped, severely life-skill students, it has emotional support, and basically, we only use them for the overflow of our Monticello students. When we're filled at Monticello, then we have to go out to other resources to get the services that we need. And Graham are, are just settlements.
Yes.
Students that go to settlements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Catherine?
Sure, we will have a motion to approve mom and pop contracts, motion to approve contract for three support staff nurses, motion to approve 202324 transportation routes, motion to approve Bethel AME parking lease for Northeast Intermediate Parking, and then we will have a discussion and motion for shredding services contract.
Could I just have that motion to approve the Bethel AME parking lease put, taken off the non-consent agenda?
Okay.
The, I'd be happy to address the discussion on the shredding services contract. We've been, we've been exploring the possibility of a, a secure off-site document destruction program to kind of aid in our compliance with, you know, personally identifiable information, protect us from any type of potential identity theft related to such matters. We've contacted a company called Shredit, they are able to offer this service on an omnia cooperative contract, they've come to our schools, they've done site visits, based off of the program that they're kind of putting together for us, it's about an annual cost of just under $22,000, it's $21,866. That will fluctuate based off of whether we determine that we need more of these secure bins that will be located at designated areas within each of our school buildings, so the frequency and the size of the units at this point that we're proposing are based off of just an assessment of what we think we, we, we need. It can be easily modified if we need more volume or less volume, okay? But it, it would provide a, again, a secure cabinet where we would institute a program that all paper goes into these, goes, goes, go into these programs, and they become recycled, shredded, recycled, and we get a certificate to show them that they were destroyed properly in, in compliance with various standards. So, we were interested in this, this was something that Mr. Baker and I had talked about, just, again, another layer of protection for, for the district related to this type of, of information.
And would this be only for the adults? And I would hate to see, like, we're paying for paper to be shredded, it's math problems.
No, it would just, mainly adults, like, so.
So, it would be like in the guidance suite, things like that, because I know that there's an enormous amount of confidential information that floats around the school in paper.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's a great idea, it's math.
Yeah, we've, we've provided some information on, on the program, there's, you know, a brochure that we can certainly send home to the board again, if necessary.
All right, I have a couple of things just before we wrap up, anyone else have anything they wish to raise?
No.
Okay, first thing is, I had a couple of, a phone call relating to the football game, actually, about smoking and people coming onto the school grounds outside school hours and visitors, and I suspect some of our more adventurous students smoking, and I'm wondering, it is our policy, is it not, that there is no tobacco use at all anywhere on the grounds? That anyone who wants to smoke needs to do that? If they, if they go, go to a football game, they want to smoke, they have to go out of the ground, presumably then re-enter without paying again, but they do have to leave. Do we have signs about this?
I believe we do have signs down, down at the stadium stating that it is a no-smoking facility, but I will verify that with our.
And around our buildings and everything like that, we've got that, that thing there?
I will, I will verify that with our operations department, but I believe we do at various sites.
And our security officers are instructed to enforce the policy?
I believe so, and I, I can say firsthand, I did witness, one of our security officers asked someone to exit the stadium on Friday evening.
Oh, that's great.
For that exact reason.
If we, if we could reinforce that, I, I, I'm concerned very much about vaping, but I think that before we get too concerned about vaping, we, there is still, we need to make sure that there's just no, no cigarette smoking, or pipe smoking, or cigars don't seem to be around much anymore, but anyway, just within our school precincts, we're going to, as we start the year.
I thought, whatever policy is in place, we need to make sure.
I believe it's state law.
Yeah, we need to, especially hold our adults accountable as examples to our students.
Yeah, I mean, we just have to.
Enforce it.
Yeah.
But I'm actually, it's a state law that you can't, it's a drug-free zone, schools are drug-free zones, there's no smoking, vaping, you know, all of those types of things.
So, I think, I think the policies, we just need to enforce it and make sure that we're doing that.
Are the policies updated to include vaping?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so, well, yeah.
Policy.
Madam Chair.
Well, we'll look into that.
Not to put you, I mean, I.
I'm looking at you like.
I, like, I just lump it all together in my mind.
I think we did it recently.
I think we did, too, but, but Tara will, will read the fine print. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I think we did, I think we did it.
And the second and far more important thing, I think, is that next week, we're back in business. We have nearly 9,000, maybe over 9,000 students coming back, we have fabulous teachers, I think it's a credit to the union, to the HR, that everything, we're going to be virtually fully staffed, which is wonderful. We've done the best we can to get the buildings ready, but next week, we start our core business. Next week, we start helping those young minds and every one of those kids be the best person that they can, and I just want to say, I'm very proud to be part of this school board, I'm very proud to be part of this district, I think I can speak for my colleagues when I say, let's have a fabulous, fabulous year, and as someone said to me the other day, 180 to zero, 180 great days of school, and I want to thank everyone for that and wish everyone luck.
But, very quick before we, sorry, but just because I picked up Haley's Chromebook today, and I was asking a question to Mr. Carney, and he replied back, can we just, the district is still looking through options for ensuring the Chromebooks, just so that that is known, like, my daughter picked up her Chromebook today, and there wasn't too much said about being careful with it, and that it's our responsibility and such, so I just want to make sure that it's out there, that we're still trying to work through the insurance options, and that the children and the families just need to be extremely responsible with these as they can, but that hopefully is coming to us soon in the near future.
Absolutely, it is, actually, Mr. Carney brought that up again today at our staff meeting, we, I believe we're meeting tomorrow morning about it. So, we are looking at various options, whether the district funds the insurance, you know, there's some advantages to that as well, and we've, I've asked Mr. Carney to reach out to other districts to see kind of what program that, that they're operating.
There should be, do they have to sign off their responsibility when they receive the Chromebooks? Is there paperwork?
There is paperwork that, that does have to get signed by either the parent or the student, I believe, at, at the collection. It's all done through our frontline software at the moment.
Okay.
Okay, all right, anyone else have anything further to add?
I just have one kind of positive thing I'd like to add before we close for the evening. This summer, Director Yanni and I were involved in the American Exchange Program, which is a program that's run by Mr. Scott Leskey over at, in Scranton High School, and it's an American Exchange Program where students from America come to other parts of America. I had two young men, they were delightful, Sam and Kayden, she had Alex, and it was a wonderful week for me, who hasn't been, you know, had children in my house in many years, it was kind of nice to have to, have somebody at breakfast, and feed them breakfast, and drive around town, and drop them off, and hear all their funny stories, and how they just loved Scranton, and they were honest and said it wasn't their first pick, they had five picks. It wasn't their first pick, but that they absolutely loved Scranton, they made wonderful friendships. I got to see Scranton through their eyes, through visitors, through a young student. Of course, they were very interested in the office, because all the young kids were watching that again, you know, so we had to go to Cooper's, and we had to go to Alfredo's for dinner, and we had to hit all the, the spots, but just to, you know, with the one boy landed, and he said, wow, it's really green here, and I was like, well, it's been raining for about three weeks. But he came from Vegas, so for him, that was pretty exciting. Then the other boy, when I was showing him around my house, and we, they got there the first night, we went down, you know, I showed them, took them downstairs, I have a pool table for them to play and things, and he said, are we underground? And I was like, um, yeah, I guess, really, are we underground? And I said, well, let me show, there's a window, that's ground level, and we're here, and the window's up there, so yes, I guess we're underground, but they just had, just their perception of the, of the area, and it was really, it was, it was really a nice opportunity, and I just think for anyone that wants to open their home to another student from our country is really something that you should think about, because we had a, a great week, and maybe Director Yanni wants to.
It was, it was a really positive weekend, my, my biggest concern was, like, how was I going to entertain him, like, would I have anything in common? And if anybody's even considering doing it for next year, you don't have to entertain at all. Mr. Scott Leskey has everything planned out with his team, and they, those kids go from eight in the morning until 11 at night, the hardest part for me was.
Staying up.
Staying up at night, waiting for him to get home, that was my biggest challenge, but it was really a positive experience.
It was wonderful.